Okay, it's 6:02. Good evening, everyone. We're going to call to order the Committee of the Whole Meeting for Thursday, February 6, 2020. Can we have a roll call, please?
Mr. Gentry?
Here.
Mr. Garin?
Here.
Mr. Troy?
Here.
Mr. Quagliano?
Here.
Mrs. Melendi? Mrs. Meyerino? Mr. Fleck?
Here. We do have a quorum, so we can continue. Looks like number two is public comment. Mr. Armstrong, do we have any public comments? Looks like we may have one, at least.
We do have one.
Okay. Okay, yeah, if you could come up, introduce yourself. Okay. Okay. If you can stick around, maybe we can talk afterwards, or I can give you my contact information.
I'll get up and talk.
Okay. Even better. Okay, so...
My name is Terry Ora, living in Hockley.
Kowski? Do I need a mic? Okay. Quick question on these contracts and everything that's taken. I was looking at the agenda for the high school especially. How do you send these contracts out to these different contractors? How do you get these contractors for different jobs there, to bid on these jobs? I mean, is it people that you've done business with before that you're happy with? Do you always get the lowest bid, which I think a lot of us know that the lowest bid isn't always the best job? You always, I mean, you know, you learn that. That's one of the things. You get what you pay for, I guess. But how do you go about sending out these contracts to these other contractors to come in?
Yeah, I... Yeah. We appreciate your comments, and perhaps you and Mr. Rincaza can have a conversation about how that works out.
Okay. I'll talk to you later.
Okay. So... Okay. Is there any other public comment? Okay, there being none, then we will move on to the Pledge of Allegiance. And have students from Heinemann. Mr. Lischfield.
Mr. Rhodey and I are here from Heinemann Middle School, and tonight we have members of our Heinemann Snowhawks Ski and Snowboard Club. We're in our second year of this activity that is super student-led, all the way from the logo to loading our equipment on the bus. So our eighth grade leaders are here with us.
I'm Logan Young.
I'm Noah Jensen.
I'm Zoe Bishop.
Ashley Pomisak.
Jared Stukowski.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Zoe's mother would like to note that that is a cheerleading injury, not a ski and snowboard injury. Please add that to the minutes.
Zoe's mother, that was going to be my first question, so thank you. And feel free to, you know, raise your hand, or you all can answer, one or two of you can answer, it doesn't matter. But the board is curious to know a few things. What is your favorite part of Snowhawks Ski and Snowboard Club?
Personally, for the ski club and snowboard club, I like just, it gives you an opportunity instead of just like, if you were to go snowboarding or skiing with a friend, usually you'd be going with like one or two friends. With the ski club, you're able to like hang out with multiple people and just talk to new people and make a lot of new friends.
Much like Jared said, one of my favorite parts is like, our trips are mostly on Fridays, so it's really nice after a week of just homework and tests and sitting in a classroom and just learning. It's really fun to just unwind and hang out with your friends.
I usually go like once or twice a year with like my family, and it allows me to go more, and like I kind of enjoy it because it's more often, and I have opportunities to go to like different places.
Good. Anyone else?
I think it's fun to just like unwind with friends, and you get to hang out with different friends that you don't normally hang out with at school, and you can just hang out with anyone you really want, because everyone's a group.
Good.
I like because then you can hang out with people that like the conditions are good.
Okay. How'd you get interested in snow sports as a young kid?
When I was younger, my mom and dad both really enjoyed snow sports too, and so they kind of wanted to get me and my brothers enjoying them too. So they took us to a ski resort once, and we stayed there for a couple days and went skiing every day, and just really enjoyed it, and kind of been skiing ever since.
I got interested in snowboarding because there was this snowboarding park called Raging Buffalo about two years ago, close, I don't know, but we saw a group line for it, so I thought I might as well try it. I was interested in it. Tried it, I got hooked on it, I started snowboarding all the time, and then that also led me into wakeboarding during the summer.
Excellent. What has been your favorite trip so far?
My favorite trip, probably the last one. We've actually got a lot of my other friends to join in the club for that last trip, and so it was really fun to see them. One of my friends has never been skiing or snowboarding before, so it was really cool to see him try something new, and he really enjoyed it, and now he's going to go on the rest of the trips for the season.
Where'd you guys go?
We go to Alpine Valley.
Oh.
So it's, I think about an hour away.
Are all the trips at Alpine?
Yes.
Okay. Very good. Anyone else?
What was the question again?
What's been your favorite trip so far?
Okay, I'd probably have to agree with Noah and say one of, either the most recent trip or the second most recent trip, just because there were so many new people that I joined in recently, and we got pretty good snow too, so the conditions were really nice.
I'll bet. Okay. And what have you learned about leadership by being a two-year member of the club?
I mean, for me, I taught a bunch of sixth graders how to put on their boots and shoes, and you know, that took a while, and it had a lot of patience, but you know, I think it kind of helped, and I kind of learned everyone's names, and like they would ask me how to like put things on, and I think, yeah.
Oh.
Nice for them.
So you learned patience.
Yeah.
Okay. Anyone else?
I learned with like being a leader, like, like Zoe said, having to kind of deal with the sixth graders in a way, and it might not be exactly what I want to do, but it'll benefit them more in a way, which then kind of helps them understand the more meaning of being a leader, so they can understand that they might have to put others before themselves.
Very nice.
I like helped one of my friends play skiing a lot.
Very good. Okay. We're going to go up behind you, we're going to get a couple of pictures. Okay, so wait Moving on to revision and adoption of the agenda, let's go through here. It looks like, do we have anything on curriculum and instruction? So we do have everything else. It looks like, after, I'm going to make a revision. After item 12, we're going to suspend the Committee of the Whole Meeting and go open up the special meeting that we have already notified everyone of, and then at the inclusion of the special meeting, we'll return to the Committee of the Whole and enter closed session. Okay? So I would like to make a motion to approve the agenda with that one revision. Is there a second? Okay, second from Mr. Meyerino Scheibler. All those in favor, say aye? Aye. Composed? Okay. Moving on. Curriculum and Instruction Committee. Throw over to Mr. Garin. That's it for number five.
There must be some mistake, though.
Yeah, yeah. Moving on, Policy Committee, Ms. Meyerino Scheibler.
Yes, it looks like we have some press policy.
I'll step in.
Okay.
Yeah, so one of the policies here, we pulled from that press packet last time around, just to get some updates into it. Ended up not being too many updates, but in terms of hiring, we're just looking at press and our attorneys, I'm making some recommendations here in terms of criminal background checks, so you know, what the board can take into consideration if someone has something that pops up on criminal background check. So they're cleaning that up essentially. Also, something that we've been practicing, that this took place back in the fall, where you can no longer ask folks how much money they make. We had it pulled off of our applications immediately. We used to have a previous salary spot in the online application, and so we had frontline, our application provider, remove that. So there's a couple of items in there about asking individuals what they make, and that's the state of Illinois no longer allowing that. So it's not really a huge deal for us, but we wanted to make sure we got it into policy. And the big part of this is going to be our pre-employment drug screening policy that's been added into here. This is coming from our attorney. As you may know, we drug screen every potential employee before they come onboard and get an official offer, and to make sure they're free of illegal drugs. With cannabis becoming legal in the state of Illinois now, we're going to continue to do that, and this policy is going to give us some options. If someone were to test positive, you know, we can revoke that offer, but we can also ask for, you know, an explanation of why that test may have come back positive, and then it's going to ultimately be left up to administration and the board, whether to bring the person on or not. So our attorneys developed a very robust drug testing policy here to implement.
Any questions on the near end? So at this point, this is informational, but we're not voting on it.
Not voting on it, seriously.
At the board meeting, so, okay. Anything else on policy? Is that it? All right, we'll move on to Human Resources, which Mr. Gentry is the chair of.
Okay. Item 7 dot 1 is HR Updates. Mr. Zier again.
Yeah, just some updates here in Human Resources as we plan for staffing for 2021, and that's primarily what we're focusing on here in February. We do have some dates down there at the bottom. It's just for information that line up with school code in terms of notifying folks that, you know, may not be returning to the district, or if a reduction enforced somewhere to take place. Just reminding the board of those dates as they loom here within the next couple of months. If we were to go down that route, we'll make sure we reach all those dates and follow the school code accordingly. And a quick note on that policy, we are moving that forward.
Any questions from committee or board? If not, we'll hand it over to Finance Committee, Mr. Quagliano.
All right, Finance. We have 8 dot 1, we have our purchase orders, and press checks, accounts payable, and disbursements listed. Any questions or concerns? None here. And that will move that forward to the Board for Approval. 8 dot 2, Revenue and Expenditures Report, Mr. Altmaier.
Thank you very much. You do have the December six month ended Financial Executive Summary. District continues to track with budget on the revenue side. If you were to look at the dashboard, you will see quite a few red, obviously, line items there, but we are tracking favorably and very consistently with prior year-to-date revenue numbers, so absolutely no concern on the revenue side. I think we mentioned last month that the impact and transition fees are trending favorably, which is good. In fact, this past month, we received another $71,000 in impact fees, so we are continuing to track within budget, within the impact transition fee, for which the last two years we have fell a little short. So that's good news there. On the expense side, continue to track. I think the big thing that we talk about every month is health insurance. We had another large claim month at $764,000. That said, we are still tracking with budget, however, very tightly with budget, at 50% of the budget being used through December. So again, we will keep the board apprised on that side. But other than that, really nothing else to report, and I would be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions? I have none. Okay, we'll move on to Fiscal Reports, your monthly fiscal update.
Thank you very much. You know, I do want to start with CPI. We haven't really talked about this, and I probably could have given you that in the Financial Executive Summary, but CPI has come out, and within last year's five-year plan and budget, you know, we were expecting a 2% CPI for the year, but it did come out at 2.3. So the board is aware. That is a slightly, very slight favorable adjustment to that five-year plan, so that will be baked into next year's budget as well as the five-year plan, so that is good news. Within your monthly fiscal update memo, I do want to point out that the property tax relief grant, we did receive notice from the state of Illinois, and as we thought we would not be eligible for the grant, we are not eligible for the grant, but I did provide some additional information there. Minivans, transportation, we had talked about bringing a quote or a quote forward for two minivans, but we're looking at the state contracts. And unfortunately, the state contract that is out there is for almost a commercial-grade minivan for approximately $32,000. The last time we purchased minivans for our transportation department, they were about $16,000 or $17,000. So we are looking at other avenues, because we don't need a commercial-grade 15-passenger bus. So we are looking at some other options, so stay tuned on that. We may end up purchasing a minivan, and we'll keep the board apprised and have you approve the purchase. One for this year, and then going into the summer months for next year, we'll probably get another one. But based on the minivans that we have, we think that we can get by with one additional for this year, and then we'll do one at the beginning of next year. Stay tuned on that. We are opening up the bus bid February 10, so next week. So we will have information for the board at the next board meeting, so that's exciting. And working on the FY '21 budget and five-year plan, and next month, we will also bring forward the Extracurricular Committee recommendation for additional stipends. We are still working through a few things with that committee, so stay tuned on that as well. Other than that, I'd be happy to answer any other questions you may have.
Do we have any questions, Mr. Altmaier? Okay, we have none. We also have our Activity Fund Report. Any questions concerning that report? Not. We'll move 8 dot 4, which is the Revenue Contract. We have one, it's for the high school for track and field. I only note that they're trying to, it's a lot of beef jerky and summer sausage for 15 grades, so it's nothing I can say about that. But any issues, anybody has? Okay. We'll move that forward. Good luck with that. 8 dot 5, Establishment of the Fiscal Year. Mr. Altmaier, you really want to comment on that?
Yeah, nothing there.
No, it's...
I think it's a good thing.
It's required.
Yeah.
If I walk, I think, so. We'll move that forward to the board, and then we have, lastly, designation, person to prepare a tentative budget, and I think, Mr. Altmaier, you win that prize also. Any questions related to that? None. Now, okay, so we'll move that forward for approval. Board, and we'll move on to Building and Grounds?
Yeah. Thank you. As we pause to find Mr. Building and Grounds.
Yeah, we could.
Unless you want to skip over.
Unless there are strong objections, we can do my legislative report.
Go ahead, jump right in.
Okay. Moving on to number 10. Just point out that the governor had delivered his State of the State address, touted the accomplishments that they made, and there's some veto session legislation that I want to point out. One of them is Senate Bill 1784 became Public Act, effective December 20th, 2019, has to do with the Janus decision and how that is to be done in Illinois. And that's all I'll say about that, but it is law now. There's a law, Senate Bill 1970, which won't affect the primary but will affect the general election, that just makes sure that any student that's entitled to vote be given time off to do so. And I will... Oh, last thing, is there's some final rules, proposed permanent rules regarding the student timeout and isolation exclusion rules. So if you get a chance to take a look at that, if you have some comments, that might be something worth working into. And that is the end of the legislative. So let's go back to number nine. Mr. Troy.
Thank you. I'll turn it over here to Mr. Rincaza for 9 dot 1. O and M Updates, anything to highlight in that area?
My sincere apologies.
Nope.
Talking construction. O and M Updates. There's a couple of newer developments that came in in the last 24 hours, just want to give you a heads up on. Energy Star ratings were approved for the 2019 recertification. We received formal written notice that high school, Leggie, Chesapeake, Marlowe, and Administration Building have been re-upped. We're working hard on the other ones. Solar project, the, just a matter of hours ago, we received notice from Commed that the inverter incentives that we worked with forefront to apply for is a part of their financial cash flow for the project. They did receive approval to the tune of $1.377 million for using smart inverters to help fund that project. The completion, latest projections, we get a weekly status report. The latest projections are that Square Barn Road and Regrode Campus will be done by the end of March, and mid to late April, Harmony Road Campus will be commercially operational. And we'll hope for fair weather that that goal is attained. Directional Boring Underground will start at Square Barn Campus next week. There's a lot of preparation going on, running the electric power lines from our facilities to out to the arrays. The, a lot of the field work at the arrays to prepare for that, and actually at the buildings, all buildings have had holes drilled in them and conduits installed, and very, very close to installing hardware for the connections on both ends as well. Project's moving along very, very, very well. We did receive a couple of bids in the last few days for things that I will bring to you next month, and I'm very, very pleased to tell you that we've received bids in both categories that are very favorably under budget from people we know and have worked with before. We've... Uh, we did receive, uh, competitive bids in both cases, um, so, um, uh, very pleased, very pleased to, to alert you to that. More news to come, I'll, I'll see you next month. It's worked for this summer, or maybe spring break, if, uh, they don't, but neither of these require a lot of material. So, I know that the regular board meeting is, uh, a couple of days before spring break, but, uh, in both play cases, the parties might be interested in, you know, starting to do a little work, uh, with a letter of intent. Uh, I think in both cases, we already have certificates of insurance on file, because we do other work with these people. And, uh, lastly, our last big bid for the, uh, summer twenty-one project list that we talked about back in August is pavement improvements. Where Conley and McCabon had a long dialogue again with the engineers, is the final, uh, final, uh, pieces of putting together, the bid specifications are coming together. I'm told they'll have a final design review set of documents early next week, and, uh, in a matter of a week or two after that. We should be out to bid. Be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, any questions from the committee or the board? All right, we'll keep moving along. Uh, nine dot two, O and M, annual report for fiscal twenty.
This is my favorite annual report. Been doing this, uh, for about eighteen years now, and we're just tracking the department overall, the facility space. We've got, you know, the usual physical data of the department. We've got information on the facility, our organization chart. Uh, you've got some financial information, you've got some information about how our staffing is tracked. And you'll notice that, uh, we're still below our peak on, uh, full-time equivalent staff per square foot. And as we've grown, we've been able to, uh, manage things more efficiently. That demonstrates, uh, to the most part. House, uh, housekeeping services has had a, has a wee bit of creep lately, uh, um, that's, uh, some of that has contributed to degree of difficulty with how we've reconfigured the high school, uh, with the additions. Uh, I think we're, I think we're doing okay, as you'll see financially, though. Um, and then, of course, the, uh, financial tracking, that, that, uh, history report, actually, it's seventeen years there. And, um, you'll see, um, our increase in, uh, cost to the district for the operating piece. And I, I like to, I think that's very important to just remind everyone that we sift that away from, uh, the greatly variable gas and electric, uh, expenses, and the, uh, capital project expenses, which has been quite a moving target over the years, uh, by the availability and need the districts had, uh, number one, by good or not, energy costs and, and, uh, the need and capacity to do capital projects, which is starting to tail off, uh, in the coming years. Um, and just pull those away and just look at the raw expenses to do repairs and maintenance of the district. And, um, that piece there has creeped up sixteen point eight six percent over seventeen years. So we've kept it down to a one percent increase per year. And, um, these buildings over that period of time, going from brand-new to aged and starting to shines, signs of meaning, uh, repair on a regular basis and, and large capital, you know, the capital expenses aside, I mean, but just repairs tend to go up when you have equipment that ages. Uh, I think we're doing a good job overall. Lot of it, I suppose, can be contributed to the fact that the district is, uh, recognizes and invests in, uh, capital renewal that helps keep the, uh, the day-to-day repair costs down. And if you dare to want to read all that detail of how those numbers came about, there's that page in there for you that you can blow up on your computer. And, um, if you want to know, um, our service contracts, what, what do we not do with our own staff? Well, there's a list of some of the bigger ones. I did put some things in there that aren't related to, to staff necessarily, but, but things that are just contracts that we have to carry in the O and M department for things like energy procurement and so forth, but preventive maintenance contracts are things in there. Um, did this print? I apologize, I hope you didn't get the same version I got, because, uh, my staff printed me a version of a document, and some of the pages are pretty, pretty choppy. But, uh, there's a page in there, I can't even read the title to it here, but the annual, uh, we've got a, uh, what we've done on green energy initiatives page in there. I don't even know what page number it is, I forget. Ten. Keep going, one more. There you go. Okay, it came out for you, it just, uh, in print, eight and a half by eleven, didn't come out. Yeah, so that just shows you, uh, all the projects we've done since we really got serious about in two thousand and seven, uh, and that what we, what we've gained for that, and our carbon emissions reduction annually, and our, our dollar savings, our, uh, energy savings. Um, and then, uh, I, I like this page that keeps growing, the ne- I think it's the next one, uh, on, no, our Energy Star numbers, we've talked about that already, but this next page, one of my peers brought it up a couple of years ago. What, what's, what kind of inspections do you do for your facilities every year? Well, um, it continues to grow, I think we're a hundred and twenty-something now. There are things that we can target as routine inspections we do, so that we, there we go, a hundred and twenty-eight. So we can try to maintain the facilities properly before they break down, we could prevent a maintenance. I give you some information on the performance of the, uh, maintenance department. I know there was a strategic goal a number of years ago, I suspect it was two thousand and twelve, that gave us cause to start tracking, like, uh, how much time it takes us on the average to turn around a work order request from a, a staffer in the building. Uh, not from our own people, self-generating, but just from people in the building. When they make a request, how long does it take for us to turn it around? And we've been shaving that turnaround time down. And then, uh, I give you a sample of, uh, for the staff we do have internally, uh, what's their burden of work orders at, at certain moments in time over the years. Uh, I think we're, um, we got a pretty aggressive staff. They get excited when they have more than ten, and I've worked in places that were a hundred-year-old facilities, and, uh, the numbers were tenfold bigger at some occasions, just because older buildings have bigger problems than were old ones. Um, and, um, then we've looked at categorically overall, how we serve the buildings and what the burdens are. We use that tool every month to take a look as a department on where we need to focus our attention, so we can manage to keep a, a balanced, equitable maintenance of the facilities. And then, uh, someone in the district office asked, uh, about a year ago, they needed information on what grants have, uh, we contributed, you know, helped contribute bringing into the district. So, I had a summary sheet about that, so we don't just spend money, we also help bring a little in. So, be happy to answer any other questions. And if anyone ever thinks that there's, there's some kind of performance, key performance indicator, they'd like to see me filled into something like this, I'd be happy to do it. It's more, a few times over the fifteen, sixteen years I've been doing this, a little bit, and, uh, but let me know if you need, if you'd like something else.
Thank you very much. Uh, any questions from the board? Thank you, thank you for all the work that you put into that, um, with all that detail. Um, that's, that's a lot of information to go through. Um, I'll move on to, uh, section nine dot three, uh, the fine arts addition construction update.
The good news is, the project is enclosed. We're heating the interior spaces, except for the hallway that's going to have a glass wall after you pour the concrete in the, uh, southwest of the building. Um, but the, uh, the black box, uh, the corridors between, uh, the band expansion, the band storage, the set shop areas, they are all enclosed, we're heating, um, they're in the throes of cutting open, openings into the set shop right now, since we've got the, uh, envelope that, uh, covers that up, uh, being separately heated now. And, uh, we're talking about pouring the concrete floors in these spaces next week, and which mean then soon to follow all the mechanical, electrical infrastructure that seems to take a little time after you get the box built, uh, it's actually going to start already, which is really good. So they're, barring any disaster, I can't imagine we're not going to open on time at this point, you know? Things are looking really good. Big equipment that we needed is already sitting there, the RTUs that we pre-purchased, so ready to drop on. We're, we're, we're doing pretty good. Um, I did give you something new here. All projects have a few little surprises, few little, uh, you know, hiccups, and, um, I think you, you, some of you may have been a present back in the day when Jefferson Wells, was it Jefferson Wells was the name? Had to do that construction audit from we did the big development to make sure we fairly managed all that. And, um, they talked about there being a need for reasonable, that you usually see, if I remember, it's up to fi- could be up to five percent, was it? And, uh, I, you know, I don't, I don't think we're looking at that here, but, um, we do have some little hiccups. So I gave you, uh, if you may remember back when we approved the original round of all the, uh, bids of construction, uh, trade contracts, um, I also asked for the board's authority to give authorization to Lamp and, and the administration to approve some minor changes. Lamp was given the authority to, to reasonably, uh, ex- expend the, um, allowance money. And I, uh, the school administration was authorized to expend an additional, if there was a spot need for an emergency need that not, so as not to slow down the project, uh, anything below ten thousand dollars, and bring it for the board review and approval of a reasonable cost later. Um, and so, there's a couple of minor ones like this. Um, they will come back to you as part of larger change orders, as one is going to be later today, I believe here. But, uh, there's, there's some small things there. I will bring you maybe a couple more next month if they get through, uh, scrutinizing, uh, costs. They're just little surprises on little bitty things here and there. Unforeseen conditions when you rip things open that, uh, are already there, and you have drawings that say they should have been built this way, uh, even in some cases, as-built aren't even totally accurate, unfortunately, sorry to tell you, so there are going to be surprises. And, um, I'd be happy to answer any questions about those in the packet, if you'd like, um, but, uh, our contractors on these matters have been very fair, and, and Lamp's been doing a pretty good job of tracking actual costs and, and things, they're, they're signing tickets in the field and things, you know? Be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any questions from the board or the committee? Okay, silence is good. Um, moving on, uh, section nine dot five, uh, JCI service agreement.
This is, uh...
Sorry, nine four.
This is, uh...
Thank you.
We, we've had a, an agreement with the manufacturer of the, uh, air-cooled chiller at McCabon that provides cooling for, uh, the classroom sections of that building, uh, since the day it was installed a number of years ago. And, uh, these newer chillers are much more efficient, but they're much more complex. And it's in our best interest, to have a highly-trained, qualified individual take a look at it a few times a year. And this is again, uh, the service contract for that. I, they have auto renewal clause in some of these contracts, so I basically write them a note before the evergreen date, telling them, uh, the district refers to terminate the contract and negotiate a new price, so as that we don't just got auto renewed with an unnegotiated price. And, uh, this is just to bring back you, uh, a new agreement for doing the same kind of thing. And, uh, I was able to bring them back down to, uh, everybody's trying to come in, I've had a couple of these lately where they come back and want a much more inflated, uh, escalation. I can rein them back into usually like one point nine percent, when I tell them that's the last year's PTEL. And, uh, without much hiccup, and that's what this is. Be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Questions from the board or the committee? Any objection from the committee with moving this forward then? All right, no objections, we'll go ahead and move that ahead. Nine dot five, asphalt, uh, crack fill and paint bid.
Okay, um, this is, uh, to seal, this crack fill, seal coat, and redo traffic paint at the, the paving that was installed at Heinemann last year, the paving that was installed, the pavement improvements that were done at Leggie last year, a little bit at the entrance, the west entrance of the high school at the south end, or what I call the boulevard area there, north of the flagpole. And also, a section of academic drive between, or Dr. John Berkey drive, my pardon, uh, drive as we call it now. Been too many years, I can't teach an old dog new tricks, and easily. The, um, the, uh, section between Conley and McCabon, where we've got the design to redo all the, uh, traffic paint for the new entrance that we're going to have toward into Conley, but that is going to make our traffic flow work better during our peak stacking hours of cars. Try to keep more cars off, uh, the drive, the main drive. And, uh, also then, in addition, uh, it's time that we get, uh, some crack fill on Dr. John Berkey drive, on all the cracks, uh, otherwise along that drive. And, um, the contractor who is low here has done, uh, this kind of work for the district a number of times over, the reputable contractor in the county. I talked to the owner, uh, he, they've got no reason not to recommend awarding it to him. I'm really not sure why SKC came in with such a large takeoff. My numbers are right in the neighborhood of where Hastings and Denler are, and Hastings and Denler have been, uh, some of our low bidders most of the years I've been doing this. They know what they're doing, so I, I'm not sure. Um, but, uh, and I don't know which car the man was doing there. But, um, we're, have no reason not to recommend Hastings for that.
Okay, thank you. Questions from the committee?
So you, I'm looking at the lineal feet and the square feet from all the bidders, and there's... Yeah, I mean, it's, uh, there's big variation.
In the seal coat?
Well, in the seal coat, and of course, there's one huge outlier on the lineal feet of crack fill, but any explanation for that, because it's really hard to compare?
I give them, I give them, uh, I give them copies of the old construction plans, and I mark and outline the areas to be done. I have a mandatory pre-bid meeting, I put the plans up on the monitor and point to it, and they're all there in the room with me, so, um, I don't know what to tell you. I know SKC, um, I, 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 I don't know if you're aware, but there's a, uh, there's a, the county has initiated an effort. I'm sorry, this is kind of a little bit off, but I think it'll ring back in here quickly. I'm participating in a group that's called the Municipal Pur- Purturement Initiative. Um, and municipalities, townships, uh, County Highway Department, all meet on a regular basis and talk about procurement. And SKC has actually got the contract with a lot of their joint purchasing they're doing as a group. And I'm trying to look at what we might be able to participate in, but they're a reputable company. I, I don't know, I don't know, and, and I don't know if I need to know, because I know that the numbers that we got down there are in the ballpark. I wish I could tell you more. Uh, somebody must have slipped. A lot of contractors now don't field measure, they, they use satellite imagery where you can measure. There's several own tools out there, and maybe somebody slipped or something, I don't know.
Right.
I, I ask for that information just to see if the low bidders out in left field, you know, and to make me nervous. And that's why I ask for those quantities. I choose not to determine the amount of crack fill, um, but to see what they're doing, because I don't want to be entrapped in, uh, minor adjustments and chain orders and that kind of thing.
Do we actually, and the crack fill, do we actually get filled based on who you choose and what their personal, lineal feet is?
Nope. The spec is, the spec says anything between three-eighths of an inch wide and two-inch wide crack, they have to route it, clean it, and fill it.
Okay.
And, but, and what I make them do is, because I've been burned on this over the last thirty years, is when they route it, I walk it with them, make sure it's clean before they fill it, and make sure that they've got the right quantity opened up. I have had no problem with this, I've been using that format for thirty years. I know the villages, municipalities, you choose to do it differently. They actually pay by the foot, and they have somebody walking around behind it, measuring it. One municipality at the last joint meeting told me they actually hired a, it's a summer job for someone, college student, walking around with a wheel.
Any other questions from the committee or the board? Okay, any objections with moving this forward then? All right, we'll go ahead and move that forward with no objections. Uh, nine dot six, fine arts addition, proposed change order number twelve.
I'm going to try as my hardest to make this short and simple bit. Okay, so DuPage Topsoil, the excavation contractor, um, had an allowance in their base bid of ten thousand dollars. As the project unfolded, their first, they were the first, one of the first people on the job after we dismantled the, that metal panel on the elevation on the side of the performing arts center there. But, um, the, the next step was to, to, uh, remove the sidewalk and the, and the grassy area and get down to good, uh, soil conditions for, uh, bearing capacity for our addition. And, um, the, the specification said that they should plan to remove enough material as demonstrated, uh, a need was demonstrated by the soil borings that were taken and provided. The, you know, technical engineer's report was actually in the bid specs. And, um, and, uh, that specification suggested that, you know, I mean, every soil boring is going to be a wee bit variable, but if you look at the few that were there, it suggested it should be eighteen to twenty-four inches. Well, you know, we picked places for soil borings at the recommendation of Geo-Technical Engineer, and, uh, for some reason... engineer always comes back, brings his little field tools and does bearing field, bearing capacity tests and say, "No, no, you're not down far enough." And in some cases, um, they can actually tell by the type of soil and things that it's not going to be the appropriate bearing capacity and said, "You need to dig down deeper to find what's typically around here a good clay." And, um, so they had to dig down about an extra foot. Um, and, um, in this area, that equate, that extra foot equates about a hundred and eighty-five cubic yards. I will tell you that there was much debate between the contractor and our construction manager where they started out with a much higher number. And I asked our construction manager, because I know they do, do daily field logs with daily pictures, to produce those pictures and do a, their own calculation and share it with me to suggest if it was reasonable. And I reviewed all that data and it seems very reasonable to me. Um, when you're doing this kind of work, uh, when I used to build buildings, I did this all the time when I designed built buildings, when you're, when you're bringing back in new engineered fill, uh, you always allow for about a twenty-five percent quote shrinkage factor for the new material because when you dump it on the ground there and you compact it, it's going to shrink. And number two, you're going to have a little bit of loss when you're handling it, you know, crumbs spill off to the side or something. And so, that factor of twenty-five percent is reasonable. So, all Lamp's calculations that come up with what they did inherent reasonable. I am told the contractor agrees to these, these calculations as presented by Lamp, um, now. So, there we, there we come up to a cost that you're seeing in a calculation, uh, on, on some of the pages here of, uh, sixteen thousand two hundred and eighty dollars on page four, uh, in some of all those numbers and lines and things there. And, uh, then, um, we have to go also and, um, take into account some other things. There was a PCO you saw earlier for a, uh, cleanout that had to be relocated. And where that cleanout, cleanout was relocated, um, the, um, that was about, uh, that's in here. Back up. Somewhere. Well, it, it calculates out, so the net available allowance money that could be put towards this is six thousand three hundred and thirty-three dollars, that's the PCO three piece. Because the other part of that ten thousand dollar allowance was expended by this, uh, other, uh, PCO for the, uh, cleanout relocation. Uh, so that leaves a net difference. Uh, the why I stuttered here is because, um, there's a, there's a net, there's a net amount there then of, uh, eleven thousand one hundred and fifty that the contractor is entitled to. Because by contract, they're allowed some markups for their bond and for their overhead and profit that are fixed. And so, um, now, I, I stuttered because that, I've asked the board to approve the wrong number in the write-up here. My, my sincere apologies and I don't know how you want to handle this, but, um, with the Robert's rule of order, I, but it should be eleven thousand one hundred and fifty. What Lamp is, uh, their, their newer project manager has done is he's put the Lamp markup in there, which shouldn't be there because you're approving a change to the contract with DuPage. Uh, the Lamp, the Lamp also will be entitled to a small fee for the extra work, the, the percentage fee for the extra dollar value of work. And that's why the number was jacked up to that number. My sincere apologies, but, um, that, that shouldn't be that. It should be, uh, the, uh, that three hundred and ninety-six dollars they put in there shouldn't, shouldn't be, it doesn't, yeah, we'll, we'll update it for the board meeting and bring it as an action item, it'd be much simpler, I believe, right?
Well, what we can do is just set it aside and let the, let it go to the general board instead of having the committee approve it first, since we're deficient in the information. We'll, we'll just-
Or miscalculated, sorry.
Yeah. So, so still move it, still move it to consent then?
Okay.
Okay.
I apologize for that.
That's okay. Uh, any questions or concerns with the explanation that we've been given? Any objections with, uh, with, uh, moving this to consent then? Okay. Thank you. Uh, we'll go ahead and move that to the consent, um, with the updated information at that time. Uh, nine dot seven, the stage curtain and pipe frame bid.
Okay. Um, we are now going into a phase of, uh, of expenditures that, um, I might want to, uh, if it's okay, I want to talk about this expenditure as it relates to the funding of the project a little bit as well as this. Um, the, um, this is part of the owner furnished expenses, stage curtain. You may reflect that, uh, back in last August when we approved all the, uh, trade contract bids for the addition, we rejected, rejected the stage curtain proposal. Um, there were some last minute changes during some of the addendas, uh, that left it kind of gray as to what was really going on with the scope of work and didn't meet our needs and, and, uh, and, and things, so we, we pulled it. We recommended it be rejected and we take this back and, and regroup and look at exact, relook at the spec real hard to make sure what we were going to get was going to meet our needs. And, uh, something else we found, uh, that was missing was the, there needs to be a pipe grid frame installed up near the ceiling. It's a specialty theater kind of an item. Um, I hate using that term, but it's reality. Um, people in the business of building things like theater outfitting of lights and stage curtains and things and, and audiovisual mounting up in the air over the stages and things, uh, construct a frame that's suspended from the ceiling. And this is what we're calling in a pipe grid, uh, which is in, uh, the, the Grand Stages bid of sixty thousand three hundred and fifty-five dollars here. And that wasn't in the original bid package, it was rejected. It was originally in the general trades contract bid package, which wasn't appropriate, but never got re-applied over to the stage curtain package. So, it, it was kind of messy in that little bit in August. Well, uh, we, we, we put this out to bid and we had a couple of challenges again, um, but, uh, it took a while to get through the bidding process to try to accommodate some, again, little stutter steps. But, we ended up getting something out we thought was a good opportunity for competitive bidding by splitting up the pipe grid frame and, and the stage curtain bid with the stage curtain bid spec that was, it meets our needs. And, uh, and we also, in order to try to save a little bit of cost, talking to our, uh, PAC manager Nate, uh, we, we could maybe, uh, get along without the cyclorama, but it's something we would want to probably consider procurement down the road. So, we took an alternate bid to base bid B. Base bid B is the curtain. Base bid A is the pipe grid frame. And the alternate bid one to base bid B is that cyclorama, that extra piece of curtain that goes around backing up the, the regular old curtain. Yeah, so that's one behind it, so if you slide some open, you still got something behind it besides the black wall. Uh, and acoustically, that's a big help. Um, and, uh, then lo and behold, we only received one bid. And, um, did a lot of, I let this sit on the table, uh, up until the last minute. It actually is going to expire if we don't act on it this month, and I'm not saying there's anything wrong with that except it may not be done on time, uh, for everything else that we're trying to finish off and deliver in August. But, I wanted to do some background checking as to, are these fair prices? Um, with the help of Wald, uh, and Lamp, uh, we actually found that the person that is our electrical contractor has been involved in other construction where they've been involved with this kind of work and told us they, they could possibly be interested in providing a proposal to us that would be a change order to their contract. Um, they looked far and wide and came back and told us that, well, um, that would cost us ninety-two thousand dollars. And then we also called the people whose bid we rejected on the stage curtain back in August, they told us a hundred thousand dollars in writing. So, the reality is that number of sixty thousand three hundred and fifty-five dollars for that pipe grid up in the air isn't a bad price, we're telling, we're suggesting to you. Um, now, on the curtain, uh, we did talk to Northwest Drapery and ask them why they didn't bid. The other guy is like a broker, um, and so, we weren't sure who he would have been working with and we, we chose to speak with Northwest and he said there was a bit of proprietary information that he felt uncomfortable, uh, he didn't feel like he could be in a competitive environment with the track that was still in the spec, uh, that we had. Um, but I, I pleaded with him to look, take a hard look at that spec and consider a different track and where would he be? And he was very, very close. He was within a couple of thousand dollars and, and we would, we would, uh, have to go out to bid, that would cost us money. And so, it wasn't, we, we feel that that's a reasonable price for that piece as well. Um, so, we were looking at recommending base bid A and base bid B as they stood. Now, uh, interestingly enough, Grand Stage also offered a combined bid discount if we would do both base bids and the alternate bid and give us the cyclorama as well for a total combined price of a hundred and thirteen thousand dollars, which is a very, uh, significant discount. Uh, we could never come back later and buy that cyclorama, cyclorama and have somebody come in and rent a lift to go in there and, and work around the existing stage curtain and install that cyclorama later for, for that price. So, we're recommending to the board that, that we go ahead with that. Now, just to give you some feel for where we are on the budget for this thing overall, the owner FFNE costs that are in the Lamp budget you saw on the, uh, page two of the, or three, depending on how many pages of text I put in the memo, they're on the, um, on the, uh, on the project overall. Lamp is, uh, we, when we started on the drawing board with this project way back a long time ago, we were looking in the neighborhood of like two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the, all the different owner furnished items, sound system, lighting system, music storage cab, cabinets, uh, music equipment storage cabinets and the, and the expanded band storage, uh, seating in, uh, this, in, in the, in the black box with the stage curtain and, uh, dust collection system and the, uh, new, um, set shop and the playbill displays in the, in the corridor to the south vestibule. And, um, and, um, and we actually even, uh, weren't even carrying a budget for security at the time. And, um, then when we, we went and took another look at it as we were getting done with, uh, creative design and getting into design development, actually bid specs going out to bid, all of a sudden, we were also afforded an independent opportunity as a school district to look long and hard, uh, to people that we would want to work with to do all these components. And we were coming up with a new total of like five hundred thousand dollars before we went out to bid and it was really, uh, really, uh, a big concern to us. Did a lot of work, continued to do a lot of work. And, uh, we were able to rein this back in down to, to a point when we were presenting you bids to, uh, to three hundred and sixty-one thousand dollars that's in the, the Lamp overall spreadsheet. Now, with, with the stage curtain and all the other things we're going to talk about here as this meeting carries on tonight, uh, we're, we're looking at a new tally of seven, three hundred and seventy thousand, so, we're within nine thousand of that latest goal and that's, that's a pretty solid number that, uh, it's not the worst number we saw, it's not the best number we saw, but, um, we're, we're, we're not, and, and we don't believe in terrible shape there. Sorry for the long story, but, um, I'd be happy to answer any questions about this bid.
Thanks for putting that in the context as well. Um, I imagine, is this just a, a unique type of product and that, that's why we have very few bidders on something like this?
Um, well, um, I, I, I solicited the big players. Um, Grand Stage is one of them, Northwest Drapery's been one of them for decades and decades. American Drapery, Old Richard Zell, he's done a lot of my business in the last three or four decades. He, he gave it up, he retired. Uh, he's done. And, uh, there's another company called Coit out there. All-Star Drapery, we did work with them and we did some of the treatment and, on this, on the PAC stage curtain, uh, over the years, and they also, uh, earn the game on replacement curtains. And they do sub some of their work to Norco. Norco doesn't like to do public bidding, uh, and nobody else was interested in, in it and I, I, I don't know. I know Northwest Drapery actually got the bid for the PAC when replaced that, not that long ago.
Yeah.
Um, so, that's why I continue to dialogue and do, make that brief, so.
Any questions from the committee or the board?
Not too excited about one bid. Um, I, I think I want to not put this on the consent agenda and dig a little deeper into the details.
Okay.
I mean, if you guys say you want to go forward with it, it's fine, but I just-
No, we can, we can pull this off with consent, that's fine.
All I'd say is, I mean, what do you think there's more to do that they haven't done? Like, would be my question. Why is that? That's, that's my question. I, I appreciate the thought because I, I agree, my first watch would be the same, but it's, they're telling us. Well, okay. Why don't we do that? I'll do a little homework. If I find something that concerns me, we'll pull this one off. Uh, but that, yeah, it's just the same, the same, the same concern you have and it's, it's good to have comparisons to understand. I know you tried to do that and I appreciate that, but I just, I just don't think this is a consent agenda item at this point. So, okay.
Well, uh, I'm, I'm fine with putting it on the consent, but-
And I'm fine too with putting it on.
But we can certainly pull it off if we need to.
Put it, yeah, put it on and then just hold on.
All right. Yeah, I'll agree to that. Thank you. Uh, the next one, um, nine dot eight, the main stage theatrical supply proposal for the lighting.
This is part of that owner FFNE and this is the, this is all the infrastructure for the lighting and it's not only, it's not only the, the, uh, the hardware and installation, it's the, it's the design for this. This isn't simple just wires and lighting like in a classroom. This is, this has got technology behind it that, you know, how they operate and manipulate, uh, lighting for the needs of the theater. It's a, it's a very unique system. Be happy to answer any questions.
So, this wasn't something that necessarily went out to bid or is-
No, because it's a, it's a unique system. It's got design involved with, uh, with the-
Yeah. Okay.
Are, are there, are there other players? I know it's a unique item, but are there other competitors?
We, um, we referred to our Performing Arts Center, uh, management team and asked them to provide us guidance on, uh, where we should go and, uh, they highly recommended these people.
All right, I understand that, but, um, did they offer up any other names and say you should talk to these people as well?
No. Uh, one of the only players I know of is, uh, are only bidder for the, uh, stage curtain. And, um, it's out there.
We can certainly get a, we can certainly get a price comparison and reach out to at least Main Stage and do some investigation.
Yeah, we can, we can definitely have that, uh, for the board meeting as, as well and, and if needed, we could have Nathan Knappke here to kind of explain his experience and his understanding of this type of equipment. Um, and, you know, and I am sure he has scrubbed it, um, to ensure it's, you know, within the range that certainly he was, we were expecting it to, to fall under.
Is there a, a timing concern with approval in February versus completion of the project?
This, this vendor and the one that's on the special meeting are both very concerned because of the design, uh, process and procurement and timing.
Okay.
Is this the one you want to put on the consent agenda or do the same thing?
Uh, it's, it's kind of the same thing and I'm, I'm being a little more cautious about this just because of the, how this project started and where we're at and I think we need to be pretty fiscally responsible about these things. Um, and I'm, I'm concerned that, you know, the last two agenda items, we didn't really have things to compare it to. Um, I just would feel better if we had a little more information. If we, if we have time to do it and everything and I know what our budget is, but that's not really how we go about these things is we try and get, we try and get as much information as we can and it's presented to the board so that we can look at these numbers and say, "Yeah, this makes sense," so. So, that, and, and this project is a great project, I just, you know, what we, what we first started out at and where we're at is those numbers are creeping up there and I just want to be cautious about it.
Sure. And, and the- Sure. And the nature of the beast here is it's a rather unique facility as well.
I get that.
So, yeah, we kind of have to tread into those waters. However, I do understand the concern and echo it as well. So, yeah, if we can get Nathan here to talk about it a little bit further, that's great. Get any kind of additional information, fantastic. I guess the question becomes, do we put it on consent or do we put it on the general board?
I really want more information. So I think we'll just, my preference would be to put it on, not on consent and have the presentation there. And if we can take action then we will.
Okay.
Not we won't.
Yeah. And this one, it comes without additional bidders that chose not to, the other one had bidders that chose not to bid.
Well, this one's a bitter exception.
And I understand.
Because it's technology, but regardless, we should still see what else is out there and know what we're dealing with. So.
Okay. We'll leave this one off of consent then. And then lastly, nine dot nine, the music equipment storage lockers.
Okay. This one here, furniture procurement, as we've done in recent years to try to preserve quality. In compliance with state statute, we looked at considering equipment of a quality level we wanted instead of being put in a position to, to sort of get a little bid to recognize procurement of equipment at a national tested bid price that is part of a nationally recognized cooperative. And this equipment here is from Wisconsin Bench. And I have a sample of their music locker in my office that I shared with the school administration and the band program personnel. And we brought it out there and compared it to what we have in there presently, which is Winger. The last time we purchased about a year, I think it was a year ago, maybe a year and a half ago, to try to help us sustain our needs until we kept needing to meet the needs that are ever expanding out there. We had got a price from Winger for the same thing. And at the cooperative price from Winger, the same exact equipment is like sixty-four thousand. And so we've got this Wisconian bench product that's got a couple of minor adjustments we think are positives to materials of construction. And we don't, we think it's no lesser than the Wisconsin Bench. It's at fifty-four thousand dollars. So be happy to answer it. We're going to, just so you know, we're using the existing storage lockers that we do have out there. We are not getting rid of them. There's some old Stevenson industry versions that were there since we built the place in two thousand and two. We took a hard look at them. Our maintenance department did a fantastic job at doing some minor adjustments on them. And we're confident we can keep those going for a long time as well and just complement what we have by installing these. We just, there's a lot of them to buy.
And you said this, and from what I read, this comes in at a more competitive price than...
Yeah, it's, Wisconsin Bench is about ten thousand dollars lower than Winger. And they're both on cooperative price points, just different manufacturer.
I see. Okay. Any questions from the committee or the board? All right. Any objections with moving this forward into consent? Okay.
This one will move forward to consent and we'll move to item eleven.
All right. Well, we are officially at the mid-year port of our strategic planning update, which I offer you to this evening. Things are moving quite along with the nineteen, twenty measures. It's been a lot of, I mean, work behind the scenes is, has been really tremendous, really proud of my team. And all that's taking place, the student achievement is a few of the highlights of some of the major things that are excited to share as to not go through every detail of where we're at as some of that work is ongoing with nothing really to report. You know, our student achievement measures are obviously our primary area of focus. Work continues to take place in that area in support of that student growth, seeking that eighty-four percent of our students will meet their targeted growth measure continues to be our focus. The elementary interdisciplinary units is one of the major, major, heavy lifts that you actually allocated three teachers on special assignments to write the curriculum and develop that. That work is going on and they are on track. And actually, an in-service day coming up next week are presenting a number of, a number of points of their progress to other elementary teachers around the district for feedback and that conversation about implementation and what the first couple of units that they're going to build prior to the end of the school year will look like. So that work is ongoing and we're really excited about the direction that that's heading for continued innovation at our elementary level. Just as a reminder, that's where our social emotional learning standards will be implemented at the elementary level. So we'll be excited to share that next year. Onto that social emotional learning review, that's going. Mrs. Romero is leading that group of teachers and staff members. And that work is going also extremely well. In a unique turn, our P E and health staff have taken the reins six through twelve and said they want to own this in their curriculum. And so it makes a lot of logical sense, although it's a little bit of a different path than I've seen other districts take, but it's one that I think is going to fit really, really well, that our health teachers and then the P E department, taking on the social emotional learning in six, twelve. And as I said, the elementary classrooms, it'll be broken down into the tier one classroom. Dr. Del Castillo is leading our educational equity coalition, which a couple of you sit on that group. I can tell you from personal experience, it's been a deeply emotional and moving experience for me to be a part of that group. It's something that's pushed my limits in terms of what I know about myself and that book that I shared with you all that if you have, if you've had the opportunity to dive into, I think you'll find that you'll experience some of the same internal struggles as you come to grips with some of the biases that you hold, just as humans as we all do. But it's been a very rich conversation and I really look forward to that translating to the next layer as we move forward into implementation next year with our, with staff. Our P L C continuum survey took place where each of our buildings are evaluating the professional conversations they're having with their teams about student progress and how they work together to ensure that their instruction aligns with students' need. That's been an area of focus that our teacher teams are in different places across the district, but they're able to personalize where they are and work with instructional coaches as well as building administration and district curriculum department in terms of tracking their progress based on what their team needs in that moment. That work is going on on all of our buildings. In fact, all our principals have specific goals tied to their evaluations this year on the P L C development to ensure the learning conversations are happening at appropriate levels. They're doing an excellent job of that. We continue to offer a number of high-quality parent education opportunities. We've done vaping to internet safety in cooperation with Mr. Dean, Mr. Armstrong, and really a number of different people around the district are offering a number of different parent universities that are getting very positive reviews and our parents are asking for more. So we're seeking opportunities, we're seeking ways that we can increase the frequency of those offerings. And then finally, you know, obviously our solo project has received a lot of positive press from Chicago news stations to the local media. We're very proud to see that project finally kind of coming to the construction phase. And as Mr. Rancasic mentioned earlier, nearing the point where we can turn the switch and use the power of the sun to light our buildings. So, we, long story short, we're tracking exactly where we expected to be at this point. A lot of great work going on behind the scenes. I look forward to August and September to report out on the successes for the year. But everything is moving along according to plan. I'll take any questions if there are.
Any questions? Thank you for that mid-year report. It's a lot going on. At this point, I, as we revise the agenda, at seven seventeen, I'm going to make a motion to suspend the committee as a whole to go into the special meeting. Is there a second?
Second.
Second from Mr. Quagliano. I think we need a roll call to do that.
Yes.
Mr. Fleck?
Yes.
Mrs. Melendi?
Mr. Garen?
Yes.
Mr. Gentry?
Yes.
Mr. Troy?
Yes.
Mrs. Mayurino?
Okay. So at seven eighteen, we have suspended the committee as a whole and we will hop over to the special meeting. So at seven eighteen, call to order the special meeting for February sixth, twenty twenty. Let's have a roll call.
Mrs. Mayurino?
Yes.
Mr. Fleck?
Here.
Mr. Troy?
Here.
Mrs. Melendi?
Mr. Garen?
Here.
Mr. Gentry?
Here.
Mr. Quagliano?
Here.
Okay. We do have a quorum. So let's go to the item number two, Pro Design Inc.'s proposal for audiovisual systems for the Black Box construction. Mr. Rancasic.
This is also a component of the Black Box that, for the audiovisual piece, a lot of technology involved and a lot of design. There was countless hours put in between our P A C manager and the school principal and the cost of this has bounced around, fluctuated a bunch. But we tried to rein this in a bunch. I think we all feel pretty good that this is something that minimally meets the needs of the use of this space for performance and also provides opportunity for classroom use. Do you happen to answer any questions?
Any questions on this proposal?
I'm assuming they're paying prevailing wage.
This is, these guys, that, we have electricians that are working on the job now, that are doing some of the wiring, but other some of the terminations of wiring and commissioning of the system. These are specialists that are trained to do this kind of stuff and I don't think we're going to get the regular electrician that can do some parts of it. Contractor, I talked to them at length, is very nervous about the environment of the work and they were compelled to put that language in there. They are talking to the existing electrical contractor on the job or to have them do some of the things that we declassified, you know, things that not necessarily a trained electrician would have to do, but they felt compelled to put that language in there.
Okay. This is within our budgeted amount for this?
Oh, it's substantially less than where we've been at times when we've negotiated on this one.
And it's part of the tech exception for bidding. Okay. Any other questions?
No.
Okay. Thank you for the presentation on that. Then I will make a motion to approve the bid for pro audio design. I got that name right. In the amount of a hundred and five thousand, one hundred dollars as presented.
Second.
Second from Mr. Troy. Have a roll call, please.
Mr. Gentry?
Yes.
Mr. Garen?
Yes.
Mrs. Mayurino?
Yes.
Mr. Quagliano?
Yes.
Mr. Fleck?
Yes.
Mr. Troy?
Yes.
Mrs. Melendi?
Okay. Motion carries. Next item. We need a board resolution to approve the application for the twenty twenty ISB School Maintenance Grant. Mr. Rancasic.
I'm very excited about the opportunity to do more energy conservation work in the school district course. I will tell you that the school maintenance grant that has been announced, the applications are due by February fourteenth. On the I WES site, there is a box that needs to be checked that says that the local school board has approved the project that we're filing for. It goes categorically on the decision-making. The first category is an emergency. We don't have one. The second category is a life safety. We don't have one. The third category is state initiative, there's a term, did I put it in here? It's, oh, I did, I think. I didn't. The category three is projects that the state is, oh, yeah, category three, I didn't know what was the name of it. I apologize. But this is a category three project, energy conservation is on their state initiative list. There was a few kinds of projects that fit that category. There are other lesser categories, but we recognize that as we continue to try to strive to get our buildings Energy Star rated and preserve those ratings, as you can see over the two thousand and eighteen cycle, the competition, it's getting more and more competitive. So, you know, to be in the twenty-five, the top twenty-five percentile, you got to continue to work at it. And we have two of our schools that we're recommending be part of a retrofitting the light fixtures to LED that will help get us some points ahead in the right direction. And we have one school that's barely Energy Star rated that we've got on there as well. We did not include recommendation instead for our other two lesser Energy Star rated schools, be it Conley and McCaven, because they already have had this retrofit. We were able to do this out of operating funds with some of our own staff. Last year, we recognized, we got about seven points on the Energy Star rating system. We think we recognized an improvement last year. So it's a good move in that direction to help us with that. There's no certainty we'll get approved for the matching grant, but this would be our stat.
Yeah. Let me add that we put this on the special meeting for tonight because we need to submit the grant by the fourteenth. And we do have to talk about it at a board meeting and we do need board approval to submit for the grant. So that's why it's on the special meeting. The state has set aside and they've committed that they've set aside forty-four million dollars for the maintenance grant. With over nine hundred districts approximately in the state, if every single district applied for the fifty thousand dollar grant and they met the qualifications that we are meeting here tonight, every district would receive the fifty thousand dollars. So there is a very good chance, very good chance, unlike the property tax abatement grant, that we will receive this grant. So it is a very good thing.
And if we are awarded the grant, we'll come back to the board for more discussion on the process for actually implementation.
Very good. Any questions, comments?
Nope.
Okay. There being none, I will then make a motion to approve the application for the Illinois State Board of Education twenty twenty School Maintenance Project Grant as listed in the agenda. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay. Motion is second. It is a roll call.
Mrs. Mayurino?
Yes.
Mr. Fleck?
Yes.
Mr. Troy?
Yes.
Mrs. Melendi?
Mr. Gentry?
Yes.
Mr. Garen?
Yes.
Mr. Quagliano?
Yes.
Okay. That motion carries. Thank you. Item four, Mr. Armstrong, for this special meeting, is there any public comment?
Yes.
Okay. There being none, then at seven twenty-six, I will make a motion to adjourn the special meeting. Is there a second?
Second.
Give it to Mr. Garen. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. We're out of the special meeting. Back to our regularly scheduled program. Committee of the whole, we have to resume in public session, I'm sorry, we have to resume the committee of the whole. So we do need a roll call. At seven twenty-six.
Mr. Gentry?
Here.
Mr. Garen?
Here.
Mr. Troy?
Here.
Mr. Quagliano?
Here.
Mrs. Melendi?
Yes.
Mrs. Mayurino?
Yes.
Mr. Fleck?
Here. We have a quorum. We resume and we resume the committee of the whole, which puts us at item thirteen, which is going into closed session for the items listed.
Twelve.
Oh, Board of Education.
Oh, I should have done that first, huh?
It's okay.
I got too excited. All right. Board of Education, we have meeting minutes from the January sixteenth regular meetings. Everybody has a chance to look at them. Is it okay to move that to the consent agenda? Does anybody want to pull it off because I was such a bear on the consent agenda? Okay. Then we will move that forward. Okay. Now, seven twenty-seven, I will make a motion to go into closed session for the items listed in the agenda. Second from Mr. Troy. Let's have a roll call.
Mr. Troy?
Yes.
Mrs. Melendi?
Yes.
Mr. Gentry?
Yes.
Mr. Quagliano?
Yes.
Mrs. Mayurino?
Yes.
Mr. Garen?
Yes.
Mr. Fleck?
Yes. We are in closed session at seven twenty-eight.